Yeah, but there's.
I anticipate taking eight out.
It's like nineteen, we haven't played before. Well, it surprised me because it's in, it's in capital.
Would you mind speaking a little louder, please?
Yeah, we're gonna talk to her. It was, she, she came, I, she had to figure it, I didn't see it in here, she said, that's almost me.
That's why I know she had.
That's why you didn't see, yeah, old double check.
Picking in there.
But I didn't see another six, another six thousand people this year. And then she said, told him, I said, how much do we have in there total? She added up, she said, so it's me.
Because see, we anticipated taking eight out, because that's what we talked about.
Right.
So that's what that is. So that knocks that down to sixteen, that leaves us at eight. We put sixteen there, and I didn't understand that. We anticipated what we're planning, we don't know how we got.
Well, if that's after you take eight out. So six and eight, I think is what we've got. We'll have to check with them. That's what we're counting, that's most double check.
There's only about twenty-two thousand here, so I didn't see that.
Let's talk to her, but if, let's just say if there's nineteen, you could take a little more out. It'll have to be fifty, whatever you think. If it's only what it is, we'll take out ten, I'm good. Why don't we make a note on there, what's in capital?
Because you're gonna do the same with shoes.
Well, either. But I remember talking to her over the calendar, and she said, well, we figured it out. She said, it's almost nineteen thousand. Remember when we brought it in, you know, we're talking about?
I do, what I do, I never ever talk to her, is I don't.
Oh, double, we'll double check. So solve which we're talking about, right?
Uh, we're, I'm just trying. So we have a concentration here, they got the.
Credit or anything.
It's okay.
Yeah, we did the sheet, I had a better one.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a sheet.
This one's doing hard. Okay, all right.
Yeah. These ones there are all mixed up, shit. See, and that's on these parks, remember, they get money out of subdivisions and something else. And I didn't understand this. Our twelfth, because there's a, the savings cash is twelve thousand dollars. And remember, we gave each, each city, last year or year before, Bill, we gave them money. They come in and wanted, or wanted their money out of parks. Remember when Gail and, and the city, they come in and they wanted that money, because they were gonna upgrade their parks. And then, so, I thought it was all gone, but now it's showing us twelve thousand. That's a high good one with that.
Is it a, is it a voted levy?
We're not, no, it's, um.
We're doing this town, Phil's doing a town.
Uh, we, uh, parks.
Phil's, they're new sport, uh, Phil's.
Yeah. And remember when they come in and got their money? They wasn't very sure, and they had, Drummond took every dime. Phil's pretty lucky, yeah, Drummond took every dime. Whatever they get off of, how much for subdivision, the new subdivisions, they come in, they have to pay into the park. So there's a goofy deal. I don't, I think the guy who's talking, Sarah.
There's twelve thousand bucks in there?
It's about a state pressure.
Well, I like that, so we need to.
I just don't understand it. What we need to figure out, because it seems like every time we anticipate a podium again, they come in and take it.
Where does that come from? Comes from the fees?
Subdivision, fees, and then something else, that'd be something.
Full-time fee, or?
The new subdivisions, yeah. So, yeah. Anyway, where's that all?
It's not a voted levy, it's a fee, so it wouldn't be all.
These are the voted amulets, and these are.
These are, yeah, these are the general levies that we set, these are the voted.
It might be in that, but it's just.
Where would it be?
It's a separate one itself, though, now. It's twenty-two ten.
No, because it's, it's a fee. These are voted levies, and these are general levies that we set. These are by state law, these are, are voted.
So we have a say on this, what we did, we still say, I don't know, I guess. They wrote this last time, so I didn't understand. Remember, they took all the money separately? And I think, now we're coming to Phil'sburg Amulets, it went down, but there's so many questions on this, I. That's what we need.
So is it one, six, four?
Phil'sburg?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's so much that she's got on here, that they're not doing.
They're not doing.
They're not billing, and then they, they were showing us the paperwork on who's actually working, who's covering, or. We got a big, this is a big mess.
Yeah, I remember that. So.
We need to have Patsy, it says, she. On it, and. And we gotta talk to Sarah, I don't wanna make no, nothing on this until we figure out. It says they got cash, but remember, they got paid us.
They got paid us.
They got paid us twenty-eight thousand, two pair of those, so I don't understand how she.
They get twenty-three thousand on the levy.
You know, this is one that Sarah has to sit down with us, because she's got all kinds of notes, I've read them.
What about trouble with the other kinds of?
Oh, yeah. Well, they do, they're. Yeah, see, they're not even. So on this one, we need to have, you got a note.
Yep.
Put on here, and tell Sarah about the note. Because I don't.
Well, these guys aren't doing, doing, it's a thing, yeah. Do I get that?
Well, that's why she's saying, are you doing trip reports? They're not doing nothing. We don't have no.
We gotta call in Patrick and say, hey.
We have no.
But we've done that before. I mean, it's not like we're really willing to do it.
But like you said, we have to, I don't know, I guess we're gonna have to get right down dirty and just say, hey, this. You gotta do this stuff, otherwise this.
Can't somebody out here do the billing? They're not gonna do it.
No, because they don't even turn in their trip report, we don't even know what they're doing. We don't even have a clue when they go or not, because they're not filling out.
Well, what can we do about that? We gotta do something.
Well, it's the same, we need to have Patsy in here and say, hey, this shit's gotta be done right, or.
Or what? Well, that's a good question.
Or what wouldn't we do? I mean, they're not going on trips now, I'm asking, what are we gonna do? It's the whole thing. Being their volunteers, you don't have a lot to say, because they come and go as they want, but yet they're supposed to obey, like Drummond does. Awesome. Holy shit, look at Drummond.
Well, how are they doing it in Phil'sburg, God, I mean, that's. Well, here's how they're doing it, they're going on calls, and they're billing. They build a shit, and then they have fun. But if they're volunteers, we can't make them do anything. Right? Why don't we just have somebody do it? I mean, they just, because they make sure they turn in their trips.
Well, that's the biggest thing, Chuck, is we gotta try to, they're not even turning in nothing now. Where Drummond, I asked Drummond about theirs, every time they do a trip, they come in and whoever's at, like Frank's the chairman, or whatever, or Jack, whatever. Anyway, when they come in, Clark Amulets, they go in that little room, and they do theirs. They gotta sit, these guys aren't even reporting where they're paying, what they're doing. So how do you, how do you push them into it?
Well, here's, so, so we've been through this before, we, we're gonna go through it again. We called them, and we said, yeah, we said, what's the deal? And we'll do better, but, uh, we need a better place. So we built them a new, and we said, think they can recruit more people. So they had a big class, they recruited a bunch of people, nobody shows up on the ambulance going. So, your question was, so what are we, just go away with the volunteer ambulance, and hire somebody to do it?
No.
Because we can't afford that, that's why. Have the volunteers, but we can't make them do so much, okay? We can't make them go on a call. Can't make them do anything. Right. So, we should have an overseer from the county, that, least they can tell us, they made a run out to the ranch, or whatever, and took somebody, I mean, and then have that county person do the billing. We talked about that too, about have a paid person in charge of the volunteer persons, okay? I like that idea, I, I think it might be where we're headed, but.
If you're gonna do that, you might have to figure on a full-time person for both of them, because then the families can come, and they say, well, as long as you're paid, to have somebody do that, we'll write down where to go, but they can do that. Drummond does all their billing, I know, they don't hire.
But I mean, we, we've talked about that too, we've talked about having. We may never have a photo, we just aren't ourselves, I guess, but that might be where we're headed tomorrow. You know, professional, but, you know, it's gonna be a fair competition with, it's gonna, with benefits, and it'll be, you know, it'll be.
And it'll have to be for both, because they, you know, the person.
Well, I mean, you know, I don't know why it couldn't be added on, even somebody else, or sorry, or. You have to, it'd have to be a certain authority. Could it not have been a question? I mean.
Drummond has.
I mean, well, we don't.
Drummond actually has a report on how many runs they do, and where, everything. We've never seen nothing from people, we have no idea where they go. I, now that I get the calls, that was a day, it was three calls, and finally Drummond showed up. I mean, here, he, I sense there tells that they have other people, but are they all?
They won't, they won't roll the call, they won't call.
So I, I don't know what, I mean.
I mean, I don't, I think it's a good idea, but you can understand, we can't just give it to somebody who's already part, that isn't interesting. They have to be certified, they have to go through the.
Yeah, no, that's whole.
They're probably gonna have to be at least DMT level. Well, are these drum people certified? Yeah, absolutely, yeah, they're all DMT certified, or they can't run the. And they don't get paid? No. And they go through the, we pay for the class, we pay for all their equipment, we pay for.
We bought their bags.
Bags that they pack with them, okay?
See, they tried one time doing it on their own, and, and it went wrong. Before my time, the ambulance went wrong, so I went back in the town. Just because you can't, with the assurances and all the bullshit, and it just. Phil'sburg used to be damn near better than Drummond, they would always go. Now, all of a sudden, with this new, younger crowd, they just, it's all no responsibility. They don't, they come and if it's an easy one, or something might excite some way, they run out and do it.
And you're gonna hate what I say, just, we don't make that sound a bit funny. I don't mean, no, but I mean, me, but he, I like him, though, he was the guy who made it run.
He did good, I mean, that ambulance was going on, him and Bill Dirtz, and then we're going all the time. Now, it's a whole new, younger generation, nobody, nobody likes getting up in the middle of the night and going, so they just sit there, and they know that somebody else has covered it, that's a problem.
So you've got a class of fifteen people, and two guys start going to ambulance goes. And so then, like Dirtz, and, and we go, and they, two or three years go by, and they get tired. Four mornings, all the time, day and night, winter, summer, you know, and they get, and we just wear them out. So then you get maybe two more, we're lucky for a while, but this time, we didn't get two good ones.
I didn't surprise me.
And they got me. Well, that's why I said, I mean, they're not even gonna go on the calls, and if we can get them going, of course, at least just have somebody here to do the billing, I mean, somebody has to do the billing.
They just gotta do their job too, though, to make sure there's stuff that, that person that if you hired, has available information. And they're not even getting that, you know.
That's why I said, it should be somebody, so they, they make a run, they get a hold of the person, and that person then can take them all, and. Well, okay, so, if they show up.
I see what you're saying.
If they show up for the call, what's happening right, if they show up for the call, if somebody is transported to the hospital, they probably do the billing. Where the real billing line comes from, the hospital calls the ambulance, and says, we've got somebody that needs to go to, because we don't have the kit there, so, whatever reason. And that's called a transport, it takes two people to do a transport. They drive down there, they, they bill them big time for the trip, okay? That's what Drummond's doing, okay? Drummond gets a lot of transports, all of them to the zoo, and they bring very few people to the hospital, does that make sense? So, the bread and butter for the up here was transport, because they take them down. Well, they can't get enough people to go on emergency, nobody's doing transport, I don't think they go to transport up here.
Maybe the other day, they phoned home, I think Anna Conde come over.
Yeah.
And was.
Just, it was up there, that's what they do, this thing, they need to.
I'm with you, I agree.
To, to bring these folks in immediate place, or training place, if you do that, well, it'll be good. We don't say this stuff. And we go, all right, well, we gotta get out of this anyway, so, that's what we did, and it, you know, so far, it hasn't worked.
And right now, they're looking to hire, just an ambulance, they get cost, we looked in, it just hired somebody.
Oh, shit.
We don't have.
Half a million.
If it's half a million, just to get set up, it's, you'll be.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I, it was me.
Thank God for lifeline.
I'd be more inclined to go do a, a trip, emergency. If I didn't have to do the billing and all that, you know. Maybe just go do that. They made it, we made it simple, and we hired the painful building, and they go along the line, they put in the guy's name, social security number, address. The machine figures out who their insurance is, okay? And, and, and the billing isn't that hard, okay? I mean, I don't think they have any excuse for it, frankly. It's bullshit.
I just think they're getting to be where they pick and choose what they want to do.
We don't have good people right now.
Well, the younger people don't want to go up the neither, it's like, oh, hell, it's just like, the other day, you had somebody on facial, nobody wants to show up.
So, here's the question, why don't we, why don't we bring this up at the compliance meeting? With the other, with Phil'sburg? Because Phil'sburg, it would be the biggest user. Why don't we bring it up and say, what's your pleasure, do you wanna have a public meeting about this? I mean, I think it's an emergency, I really do. I worry about our first responders, well, they got a deathly shot. They're gonna throw over a truck, or a guess, or a lifeline, and get somewhere, they have a lifeline, but they're sure as hell not gonna rely on the ambulance, because they can't.
We got an ambulance the other day, and I went to put the lady in a car, about two, the ambulance shed, just because there was an EMT there, but there wasn't no driver. So, I mean, that's, that's.
That's the craziest stuff that's going on.
That's a problem with volunteers.
All your deputies are EMTs, okay?
All your volunteers, ninety percent of them are working, so they can't, because a lot of these places are like, no, you work here, you know, so they can't get away from.
Well, McKinsey's, she went to the.
She didn't pass.
Or she goes to the class.
She went to, she didn't pass, and then she never went back, and now she waited till. She can ride.
Would she have to take the whole class in the?
Yeah, they don't, yeah. She got down there and missed, I don't know, her end, they're both, so did Ricky and Heidi, they went. And the other one that's ever gone through, and Laura, Laura's gone through, Grace.
Yeah, Laura, she was a lady.
And then, but the other one passed his car.
Oh, good.
Yeah. But yeah, see, that's a problem, they go through this whole big thing, get trained, and then they go down there, and then there's classes, you know.
Well, that's, that's tough.
I mean, it's life, yeah, that's what I told him, he was, he was, some of this isn't even close, what we've spent. So, I don't know, the two ambulance, it's a, it's a scary deal, because you got Drummond, elderly people that are running the ambulance now, but there is no young people. The youngest one's fifty-five. So what do you do?
Yeah.
Thank God.
You're right where I was when I first started, that's, I was right with you, I was like, what? And I really, I don't know what to answer.
Thank God for lifeline, that's the only thing that says, save a lot of people, because we can't get, we can get some EMT in, or some, get a patient to the football field or something, at least lifeline will come to there, and then you got one EMT, you don't have a driver. You have a driver, no EMT, so what? I don't know how to make it any better. The sheriff goes on a lot of them, due to the fact that, because he's around, but really, you're pulling the sheriff away from his duties. I think we've never ever complained or said nothing about that, because we need the help, what do you do? It's a mess, yeah, you can't afford to hire nobody to be full-time ambulance.
Do you guys wanna take a quick look at the signature?
So, I'm into, I think I just, I, we're gonna pop, she's got big notes on it, Drummond's doing, my role.
Is it, so what are we gonna do on that? Just talk to her about that, so what you're saying?
Yeah. Well, we went over this one, the economic, Chuck's saying, we lost some. This one's, um, this is how they're building.
Okay.
Same, yes, uh, which one are we on?
Well, just going down the list.
These are all mixed, we mixed these all up, so. The next one would be drugs, you know more about this, but I don't.
Forfeiture?
Forfeiture.
Yeah, well, that's a, that's a fund that, if there's forfeiture of a vehicle or something, it'll be cozy.
They don't, they don't do none, I mean.
They're just adding it in.
They never added no more or nothing, it's the same as it was, so, I think.
Usually, we give that to law enforcement if you need something. What's it, thirty-one thousand? That's something, if you can remember, that's a revenue, if in fact the sheriff needed something, it's like, we got thirty-one thousand drug forfeiture.
Carol's got it, I should be able to do that.
Right.
I don't.
Well, then the judge finds it too, and the drug forfeiture, some of these are.
I don't understand what that's, so much, seeing here, there's that, you know.
Oh, you know what he's using it for? Training, I can just tell you that, by looking at that. He's, he's using the drug forfeiture power, he had, that's what it is, and that's good, that's where it should go.
Records preservation. Lisa and Sarah was talking about doing a. Taking pictures of everything, having a little card, but then, the other day, she said, now she don't know if she's gonna do that, because they were talking about different price, that's why it's all raised here. We have on this that said, eight thousand, right now. Cash, cash is there, and I anticipate forty-three hundred, so, that's over there.
We're gonna talk to her about, she was looking into a contractor, just wanna hold them up, preserve their records.
Stayed up there.
And then, uh, and it has to be, some of them have to be stored off-site, in case of fire, you know, so you can.
Okay, now here's a gas tax, we're out of there on. We can't anticipate it.
Is that a revenue?
This is law enforcement's company. That's a good.
Yeah.
That last year, so, it might be the same.
Looks like the total budget for twenty nineteen project, budget, two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand.
Putting our money in gas tax, we're probably calling, that'll be made off the oceans. I'm putting gas tax, we get gas tax.
So this is the road project, you guys, yeah, this is the, this is the road project that we're.
Same, it's a gas tax.
Right, but if you leave these emails, this is what it is, it's the road project.
Why would you go to that gas tax? Where we could. Shouldn't we buy a road fund? Road fund, yeah. Not, hey, contribute to the gas tax, whatever we got.
That's what we do with it, with the road fund. Say, ten percent administration, so ours will be twenty-four thousand, is what we get out of it. And that's what she's got cash, she's just showing the ten percent of administration. This is the total, we paid this to the contractors, and Paul too.
And that's what we give the mics.
Exactly, Mike and Paul, yeah, yeah, so that's a revenue sheet. Probably.
They got some numbers on this thing. Is there a reason that we don't charge, means that they say, they own that, I go, why we're not charging a rent for our building? Or our ground, or the building, because they built it, why we don't charge them for having it there, like rent a year? I mean, they're making all the money off there to use in our space.
But I think it's a lease purchase, I think we are, we're buying, in other words, we're gonna be the owner, I think that's why it was.
About that.
That's why we need to renegotiate that. Oh, I went up there last Friday.
Yeah, what?
I guess it was looking very good, they were working on the spillway on the sides, and they were taking the concrete off. And that looked pretty soft, I mean.
Yeah, pretty.
Other than that, on the east side, they're supposed to hopefully pour it out.
Sheriff's got his way, no, it's, and I, this is another, she needs to be here, we do, Hannah's got some more about it, so, need to talk to Sarah tomorrow on this. If she's here. If she's here. They're talking about giving, like Jackie, she's the DES coordinator on this, thirty, thirty hours. I don't think she has enough time. They keep asking her to do more and more on everything. But the dam should be paying her out of, she should be getting some money out of the dam, so they're taking it out of the DES. The dam's the one that's having to do this, like, the dam.
DES?
Yeah, some of that. But she has to hold it in, do all that stuff.
So.
That's all I, that's why I put that there, is there enough hours for her? As in the project, she should be getting, she should be billing the dam, so they're taking it out of the DES.
So, Jackie and Bill are the two employees, right?
Yep. I mean, they got her doing all these reports and stuff, that, you know, why wouldn't she run one?
Yep, yep. How many hours is there?
Yeah, well, that's the thing, like she.
So, Chuck, did you ever figure out, uh, what's left in there? Is it, uh, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand here and sixty-six bucks? Is that what's left in there?
She was gonna bring that in, it ain't in there. She was gonna let us know what match it was, we had to pay that other. But we weren't sure if we paid on, uh, our match upon the grants that we got. So, she would, that's what Tam, that's why we need to talk to Tam about it. That's what that's. So, we need to set this aside.
The bill we got from, uh, the engineer was really misleading, because that's the total bill for the total project. And we've paid a pile. There are several of those.
But we don't know what we paid.
We wanna make sure what we know, we paid for, what we owe. Over half of them, we've already paid.
So, that three hundred and four, she was trying to tell us the bill we did?
No.
But she's, uh, she was supposed to have the stuff, maybe Tam will get back with her.
Well, that's what I said. I told Bill Lloyd last time, I said, bullshit bill is this. We just want to reflect the whole thing. It's fine.
Make it look like.
You could, you could have stuck a sheet in there and said, but, we've received payment from Grant, kind of boom, 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 boom. And that's what we'll do that. That's what we need to do, you know, we need to see that. We meet weekly, we're there. And, and K. Or, he's, I, I can tell you that I got them receipts, I know. I gotta write the file, I gotta write my stuff. But, look, we got that project thing, you know, the whole thing, bullshit. But I still think it reflects, we have to do something. We're gonna meet with the hydro people. Yeah, they said they'd meet with us. Yeah, that's good. So, we gotta get that. Yep. So, we're, we're still on the water, sir. This is the hydro thing. This is solid waste. We put the computers in there, we can get a lot of stuff on. Backhoe, twenty-four. That's what we bought. Right, sixteen, that's about it. So, on, uh, solid waste.
Yeah.
Do we need to build up the, uh, capital fund before we look at a hole?
By the way, that, remember, there was money in that, especially just for a hole two years ago, there was like twenty grand for the end. But I figured out where that twenty grand is sitting. Because we already anticipated, sort of, a couple of years ago, about getting into a hole. So, it is in that, the line. Because they didn't show it in our first one, remember?
Well, they're anticipating it's going out, so it's going through. So, twenty grand, what the hell would it cost?
No, hell no. But that's all we put in there, because we didn't, at that time, that's all we could afford to put in there. So, guy needs to really actually kind of have an idea what, what he's looking into, and how much. I mean, twenty grand, he didn't need to pay any of that.
Right. Right, so. But it's better to wait, yeah, with the sheriff's there.
Oh, yeah. You know, like I said, we put it in a couple, shit, two, three, four years ago, and we never replaced it, we keep fixing it. We're getting more, putting more money into that. Uh, backhoe, we got it. Remember, we just had the mower and all that pulled out to clear it, no, so.
Well, what he said, he could have stayed right for you.
Now, that one, we get more for it. That's what I thought he was saying. So, that's another one he's, all means.
What's it gonna be?
It's a new, yeah, a better.
So, what do we do? We have a number here.
He don't want repair, or replace it till twenty-twenty-one, so that's why I know it.
Well, we should talk about. But how much are the computers?
That's what, uh, she was supposed to have for a speaking, because that was gonna be, and then, I put down tam, tam printers on here. To see, we never, Sarah didn't know that they're getting printers too, and I said, well, if we got new computers, we need to know what the, we gotta have printers too.
Because that's probably.
Because it all matches. Yeah, see, right here, solid waste, off the computers and printers budget this year. Eight thousand dollars is what they were kind of estimating, but I, I don't know what the computers that cost, because you need two computers, two printers to set up. I, I guess I, that's what Vicki.
They're gonna change the Wi-Fi too, because they're not getting good. That could be the problem with, uh, with the scales, is the computers. They won't jump.
But Vicki was gonna have the price, and then she would have, she was gonna have the price, so I'm like, computers and printers.
So, let's go back to the backhoe. We got twenty thousand saved up. The other ones were twenty?
I, you know, I, it's just guessing, they're like.
What would you, what would you guess?
Well, your backhoe, eighty, a better.
Two and a half. So, we've got, we're halfway there. And it's, but he doesn't even tell twenty twenty, so let's do this. So, let's put it on the twenty. So, let's save up, let's take another twenty and put.
So, we're a little closer.
So, we get, gets us.
Yeah, I agree with that. Let's put a note down, see if that, we can, we can find out, just we gotta come up with fifteen grand too. Replace that, or repair this damn scales again. They're just killing some scales. She was kept to the units, not even the scales. Just move units, and then, every year, estimate what we're doing on units, and then run it through. But units sit out of weight. This, Suzie, if we're gonna use, uh, scales, it's, it's never, it's always been a problem.
Okay, go, okay.
Good to go. I'll get next door, he just, he's got a couple of things. Make sure we put that metal on ourselves, because I just had a mess.
Did you?
Yeah.
What'd you do, overflow it?
Yeah.
Pretty good, right?
So, what does it say, how much money?
Yes, I was, I was, this was, uh, they only use seventy-one percent of that, so it comes in every year. That's all the taxes, you know, on the units and everything. So, that's what's there, and they go, like, so whatever, not over, be a hundred. Seventy percent of that. I don't know, actually, we're breaking that whole. I don't know why she had that. Well, she wants to see what Vicki has, so she can't put them down to jump to get it, don't pay that. Sarah, she's showing us the scales, not showing us her scale. She should have had, like on these other ones, it shows exactly what's left in there. They say she's out there, all the units too. We're not gonna add, not change the price of the units, because I have a few systems that's been, that have them.
How many do you charge units for a person that just takes their, their, their?
It's on the taxes, it was just a set, take on taxes, reset it up, came in, went through, just some of these.
So, you're like, how much, so new, like, maybe.
Yeah, that's what, this new, uh, thing's supposed to show, is that they come in, they're all.
So, then, you just, my two thousand.
Yeah. They just did it on a estimation on two thousand over pretty much all the scales. Set up this huge thing. It was like one-twelve, and one-one, one-twenty-five, because we weren't.
That'll come closer to you.
No, so, see, and these other guys are way, way, and you're a couple of theirs. And that's, you know, you guys are all, you're like me, I got three units, that's that, and I don't. But these other ones are sitting at nine units, when they shouldn't be seventeen units, and they're killing us.
I'm going first.
Huh?
I'm going first.
You're gonna what?
I'm going first with my questions.
I didn't, I wasn't, I wasn't. This is a waste of time.
You and I know it. You and I know it, but everybody else is gonna know about this thing, yeah.
I got, I got a warning meeting first starting.
I'll see, yeah, yeah.
I agree to take the people out, but I don't want police to down the word, and if we need some, or if we're working on a deal, too, because we get a hundred dollars, we get money.
I'm surprised he didn't say something to you about the camera.
Whatever, he doesn't, so we have money, then we got a problem, somewhere else. I don't think it's, I don't think it's due, I mean, I guess.
Do you need some pressure still?
They said that, uh, Nick went into the paint field.
Oh, shit.
Put him on a paint field.
What's it say?
That's what Paul said, he went into the paint field and raining here.
Oh, shit, that means it's hard, it's hard color. It's fluttering. Doesn't pump any blood.
You know what he first opened? He got a jelly going back around his. First messy powder, he had a jelly going back around his.
Yeah, this is true.
Huh? Yeah. Yeah.
Well, if he's in the hospital, they're probably.
Yeah.
That's where you wanna be.
All right, well, back to, uh.
Yeah, what do you got, huh?
Gas town culvert supply. We took some of that, remember the Marcia, we got, uh, that money for the Marcia, the help with the gravel? And then, we put that in, we mixed it all in here, and then we had matched, and then we added twenty thousand dollars out of, wrote into gas tax, so we have money in there for gravel. We were, we all talked about it, this one's, I don't think we have much, I mean, we got it. We have to have something in there that we use, because there's only certain stuff gas tax might be used on. And that'll work out there, so.
Well, okay, so we're buying equipment. Here's a hundred and seventeen, eighteen thousand bucks.
I don't think you can buy equipment with gas tax money. That's a be upon road use, like gravel, culverts. You can't use the gas.
So, why, would we take, why don't we take all the materials out of this?
That's what, that's why we put that Marcia in there too, and then we match, we have to match that, and then, see, we're putting it.
So, the gravel, the.
Culverts, fencing, or mat.
What about the, um, uh, totes of hot oil that he was?
I can't come up with that. They said, no, I don't think that can. I thought it was just a gravel, culverts. Maybe that's just the way we had it set up, or, I, I just know that gas tax only ever use that for its color. And then, when we were buying, like, sand or.
No, who knows, like, should we ask?
Yeah, because if we can use that tote, uh, there's the taking. But I think on that, you gotta be careful, because if you use them totes on private, you know, gas tax.
Well, most of them are.
No, I mean, you have to, you want to.
Right, right.
That's our thing. That's our thing.
What do they call it? Hot oil chip oil.
There's something I think I just.
Probably good to know, because if we're, uh, these public expenditures, if we can't take it out of there, then we shouldn't be taking money out of the road. We should take all we can for, uh, materials. So this fifty three thousand was just from this year.
That's how the maps have been going through.
Yeah, the map.
Remember that?
I saw.
Okay, this one here is on the weed, weed grants, that's, we don't have a lot. They have seventeen, they anticipate seventy five hundred, so that's what they're having, they're operating, they'll have enough. And that, a lot of that, they come through the state and the MSU, but there's a state grant that they give every year to go out and pay. Ranchers put in for it and it comes through, uh, through being hogs. And then you'll see, you'll start seeing some of these, uh, when we do claims, they come in and they'll say smart bring grants, ten thousand dollars. Well, that's not a spray, I mean, it has to come through the county. But he gets a lot of somebody spraying, as a helper of some place. The weed supplies. It's a program, they send them to schooling and stuff, so they know what the spray will be and. And then they only, they get so much amount of money and they have to spend it too. Some, some of these weed grants and that, they have to use that money and they don't, they have to give. They'll burn. Uh, like MSU, whatever, agriculture, yeah. These are all the same. Well, they give, you know. This is about the valley, but there's so much money that comes in and how much they send like cross ranch out here, whatever it takes to spray and they get back. It's just a turn, it's just a handing of money to theirs that comes from us to show us that they actually did it. Because if Ben goes out, he gets so much percentage of making sure they spray right. And he'll go out and look at what weeds they have, match them, oh, you need this, and so he gets like an administration thing too.
Okay, nine one one.
This is what Scott does, this is what that nine one one.
Well, this is the money that comes off, yeah, this comes off the whole bill. And he lets it build up, but he's buying the computers.
But that grant, the grants are very all computer, yeah, and it comes through nine one one. Does the feds have a lot to say on that, or is that just, uh, is it state nine one one?
State, state. Well, the feds, they get away from the feds, but the state.
No, but I mean, uh, does the feds have control over nine one one then in, like Scott on that, on that radio thing? He has control.
He has control. He, he actually picked the bidder. He had opportunity to go through four places, so he picked the company. He said it was. They're using Swift, uh, it's computerized, and they don't like it at all.
We designed that, uh, thing for him, I agree with him, that grant.
So, you're gonna hear this here, hope, whereas like what, uh, control over elected officials do you have? Uh, they're elected officials, they're here, but this time of year, you do control a lot. And, and, and I think it's clear, what we try to do is say, all right, we'll fight with you there, make you explain, talk to you. But once we say, okay, that's your budget, okay, that's his budget. We don't, during the middle of the year, say, why are you spending this for? Like, we, we do sign the claims, okay, because we're the claim authority, but, um, we don't go, hey, what the hell are you doing? We don't do that, okay? Um, well, and Scott's pretty good about this, you can ask the question, hey, we saw a claim, now can you tell me, and what is that for? And he'll explain to you, so, yeah, this is for summarizing thing or, you know, something needed to spend on. But really, once we set off on, uh, elected official budget, if they screw it up, they don't get to get the.
This is, they call it the county land use plan, and this is, uh, this is the sheriff's stuff too. They don't have to do with the forest service, that ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, and the patrol.
Forest service. They call it a forest service control, this is inter, intergovernmental, around the state. A lot of these are sale.
He puts guys on, like, put some, put extra people on. They spend a lot more time out there.
That's a, that's a good time.
Because of, uh, uh, the way that, uh, they build it.
Exactly, so they have this all, she's going through, this is some more footprint project. But this is that. Tam is that big off the shore, maybe once in a while. That's all it's showing is that, did we put money in there to get started?
Yeah, it was off of the commissioner or whatever.
So that being.
It didn't count, so that's a big one. Anything else?
There's another grant, this is a T sub grant, professional services, this grant went back to great last. They get T sub, T sub block time, most time it's on the culverts and bridges.
So where do they score it?
Not to be like great last. They, because they don't apply for that T sub grant, and it's, it pretty much, uh, just pays their engineering or something to get started on. To get that bigger grant, like, we did Ellendale, there's a hundred and fifty thousand companies. T sub come in and made sure we were, it took us, to apply for the grant, to apply for these grants, you gotta pay money on, on T sub.
Because they want an engineer's report. So we could go hire an engineer to apply for a grant for, say, fifteen thousand, they're allowed to run fifteen thousand. Or, they go, well, let us apply for the engineering. And if we get that, then we'll apply for the bigger grant, so we go, so they do it, and they kind of say, oh, look, you got a grant, yeah, to pay you. So they take the money, but there was an engineer report, then we can submit and say, okay, now we wanna do the job. Do you have an engineer report? Yep, there it is, they report, but, but, and it's just like the first step in any of these things, anyway, at that engineer. But the cool thing about these guys, they're, they're smart enough to go, only will we get you the grant, we'll get you the grant from the plant. So they do it. And they're like fifteen grand a hour. They're getting a preliminary.
Okay, on this, and here's, here's your pill. Okay, that's what we have. This is what, this is what we're gonna get, that's what we have, this is what we're gonna take some money out.
Yeah, what is it, two hundred and fifty? It's what we have, it's about two, somewhere between two thirty five, two fifty.
This is, then they're talking about, they already had this. This is.
I feel bad. Well, yeah, so, well, with this, this is your, this is your saving. Okay?
Yeah.
That is a testimony to these guys.
But this stuff is, you know, and it's just like we, people jump in the water, and here you go.
That's after that.
No, this is what we got now, but I'm just saying.
So that, that's taken off. That's already. That's gone, yeah, yeah. You know, let me ask you a question. Folks works good about coming in and telling us, hey, we're doing this, and this is what we're gonna say. We never hear anything from them. What if they.
We don't even know if they've done anything with that.
They have.
We didn't have, uh, once we gave them, we had, remember planes had once you paid?
Yeah, but, well, I think we got public, you know, but what, what if they don't spend the money on a project, they told us they must pay? Then it's just wrong.
It's just like we went through a bit about buying a goddamn pool.
Let's think about it. Well, I don't, I think we should.
She, last time we asked, they said, well, they were doing a different study, and then we had got the Brad Coon up there, we mentioned it to her. Because he worked for him, and then he said, well, they're, uh, you know, it was kinda like.
Yeah, but I didn't want to talk about that, well, I said, well, that's what got me thinking, what if they don't spend the money on what we, what they promised, like what?
You take it back?
What do they do? Whatever. And I would come down like a tongue breaks.
Because I haven't seen nothing done, I haven't seen your, you wire the truck dump, they, you know, they're gonna put in a water tank.
You say that won't happen till next spring.
Yeah, why didn't it happen this year, when they have, did they take the money, spend it sometimes? Right, for attorney, because you're an attorney.
She's always with a.
A pile.
As she walks around with her all the time. All right, what else you got? These are revenues. Force reserve. Was this supposed to.
Transfer.
Have been transferred to where? Should have been transferred coming to, uh, to general fund. It's force preser, it's SRS. Well, that's just part of, here's the public safety part of it.
Why did, why would break down to me?
Because it's revenue, because it's revenue, it's coming in, it's just short coming in. So that goes to Roosevelt, that goes to schools.
She put a lot of this stuff in this, this is a budget for that grant, so we got this at DES.
The generator? DES got a generator for, for homeless area, it's a shoulder.
They still haven't put up the fence to school, haven't put the fence up, or they haven't, uh, test running yet, that's beat, it's gotta be done by the end of this month.
What is it?
Told me, made us very, the deal is like, that has to be done, otherwise something happens again, you get so good. And our name should be, it should have been signed, when they signed for that, it should have been Barbara Ch, she should be the one signing for it. Because eventually, it shouldn't be counted, it should, it was screwed up when they signed.
Well, she was on it.
Yeah, but she's not working on it.
Yeah, well, we signed it, but she was on it too.
That Rachel had her go as. That's what it says in the name.
Just so if this, that, if we're on the left, and, and they gotta keep up with all the stuff that they've done, a lot of county, they're like, yeah, hire somebody, go fuck the guy, so we don't want.
There's a flood mitigation, administration, county. This, I need to talk to several, is everyone understanding? See, she's done this differently, so she puts out each, where it used to be a common, like this one would have been, and Mike knows about this one, that's why.
Yeah, she has done, she's showing revenues.
Yeah, to be real, seeing every each, each and every, like this one here, and you're.
Has been.
Mike comes out, won't have any DES.
It's DES. But it's a revenue, it's money coming in.
We don't know what is coming, oh, no, grants here. Does this grant, did you know that?
This is the one where they do the training, remember, they're gonna, they get all the fire guys together, and they have the U T's and everybody together, and they do the training, that's what this is.
Did you know that DES could be paid for, if somebody just paid for, that's if, uh, city county paid for it? That DS wages that, that there is a grant, it used to be that we always get to pay for it, and they pay for it, and we didn't have to? That, that's how they pay the lady over in Deer Lodge, she brought my ticket from. I sat in there. Anyway, there's a grant, or the DS, that they, there's a grant they get that they will pay instead of county paying. That's how Deer Lodge was, she said, damn, Deer Lodge County does this, and Granite County is only, Granite County and another county, they only two counties, and don't, Granite used to do it, they couldn't do the paper. I guess there's a lot of paper.
The state D E S.
They pay Jackie wages.
That's all, you get that.
I don't believe that's paper.
Who told you that?
Uh, that lady over in Deer Lodge, it was Jack. So I told her, that's another question for Jack, you see how much, you know, pay the director, or whatever it does, to pay the wages, because there's a certain, they will pay, and that's how, I wanna say cool, but I mean, your name.
Well, but the other thing is that you're some, so you have some ornament in the state D E S program. So there's times.
That's why Martha used to always come here, Barton quit doing it, and, and that's, remember Martha used to come every year? And then she quit coming, because we quit taking that grant.
Well, let's look into that, because that's. And why do you take it?
Because there's a bunch of paper.
Well, that's a paper worth, probably straight.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Well, but it may be worth the straight, I don't know.
Something we need to look into.
Yeah, so did you make it know that? Let's do that. But we would forget, but I will.
See, and that's another. See, she's asking us on, these are the grants that we got, without Mike, and we don't know which ones.
Yeah, they, this one, this one we talked about, but, uh, this is half materials.
Right. Number one, where they do that laptop or table top?
Yeah, they'll do table top.
Like this one here is a half same thing, so. Ellendale one. See, them are the ones we mean to have, Mike, that's there, even if, there's another one, D E S, these would be one for. Jackie there. I think, I think. That D E S.
So, what does it say, does ask for money?
See, none of them are, D E S, she broke them down, just each, each with the grants of, uh.
But I make her office a full one. I can't read words. It's not a, it's not a bogus, is it?
No, I don't know where she broke them.
Where does the money from D E S come from?
This one here is a, they give the money, it's there at office.
Well, that's, uh.
I got feeling that she quit, he'll quit. It seems like they're going. I do, mine just got really now, it's, yeah. She's gonna take the money out, and I wanna make sure he knows that six hundred and twelve loads don't come out of the county, it comes out of what they give us the money for, so that'll cut his wages down a little bit.
So, Paul did an agreement for, uh. We need to look at this, this is an agreement for, uh, salt and loader storage, it's a six hundred.
Yeah, they upped, uh, new people, remember the other day I was telling you that that lady took it up, yeah. I, uh, some new people took over Rock Creek Lodge, we store sand and salt there, plus we use their power, and they upped it from four to six hundred, which is still cheaper than driving back and forth down there, so. For this year, this'll be from September to September, we need a new contract and pay the six hundred blocks, I, I think that's a good deal, I'd make a motion that we do.
General circular.
Wayne was supposed to have it first, but that'd be under rolled, that'd be something else, six hundred.
Agenda? Yeah.
Yeah.
In this one.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
In other words, we'll do it forward.
Cause we just found out that they, cause remember I told that lady who was taking it over? It used to be a pot place, there was no pot selling, and then now they're trying to be open.
Okay, so I said, just print it and bring it down, what I got tomorrow?
This is Katie, really, this was just supplies, this is like vaccination and stuff. Yeah, oh, talking about that, I wonder if we should, now that she's not around, we should maybe see if we could get Jackie to come up here and look at, uh, vaccines, make sure that they're all cool, and they're in there, cause nobody's checking on them.
Well, Katie, Katie said she would, she's not thinking that right, she's got a friend as well, she said she would try, but we should tell Jackie.
Maybe Katie should let Jackie know for sure when she's leaving, and then, so we don't lose her five thousand, ten thousand dollars, maxi.
Right, no, she didn't work out, she knows that, I talked to her about that. Uh, she's, she's gonna be at the hospital, let it be, so she'll, you know, monitor her stuff. But he's right.
Twenty thousand dollars. Yeah, nineteen thousand dollars, which is, that's what we need, we don't want.
And they can't drop before a certain, you know, temperature ever.
This is something I've talked about tomorrow.
Also, we need, for the shit.
Now, now, she's leaving, I don't, why we, we don't even know what for sure on another aim.
Yeah, read that. Well, I think we pay someone now. She wants an extra one?
Well, that's the way I took it, but I don't understand. But we kinda need to know what the A's are actually doing, and maybe the times are on them.
So, what do you think, do you think there's a good cadre of folks in the workforce?
There is, I, I do, I think there might be a really good one, uh, yeah, a young one. It's got over, so, we need everything we need, we understood. You see, on top of that, that's the A to be like, uh, that lady goes around and does that house checking on them, and there's one up here, and then one down there, that, you know, makes sure that there's.
Well, they take them to hospital, and they take.
We're ready to, you know, if they don't, then we gotta call an ambulance, now we won't be, so there's a way.
They won't be.
Yeah, so there's a way, at least, I think Patricia, I don't remember, hour or something works up here.
That, well.
Half hour, and she does a good job.
Yeah, we pay her, she makes eleven bucks a month.
She goes and cleans house. Anything possible.
She's just a lot of cook meals and horizon food, or, you know, cut a day up there.
They don't have their money, they're just going to rest, so they don't want to be, uh, serious way that, you know, here they should come.
Well, she said she wants. She wants to see, use the grant money though, this is grant money to hire an extra A, but the question would be, is there some money in there?
Well, there, yeah, that does that money, can that money go to that? So, we don't know, that's why we're having that meeting, I know. Is that what they make off my staff or that, or? No, we don't make that much.
This is investment, but it's. Guess investment in royalty crimes. Come and see it.
He was getting a lot of money out of his room. Get here by all the calls tonight, they can get out of my phone. Make that mail, mind your own cars, yeah. Yes, thank you.
Well, this is a. Um. This has something to do with the cash report for salaries.
See, like last year, a lot of these were right amongst the other, like, say, um. They break them down page by page.
Sure knows a different way.
So, there'll be a lot more questions from her, cause she's, you know, being new, she's not figured out what, she should go to. So, there should be here.
Well, this, many for salaries, that, um. She has to maintain the fund, uh, for her cash, well, that is a surplus in the system. Yeah. Cash, right?
What?
These are like.
See, why are they trying to get money, why did the airport, I don't understand. Remember I brought that up, and I asked her what's the deal there, cause I, you read on that other piece she has, it shows three thousand dollars was the radios and stuff. Anyway, why would the airport have anything to do with what the drunk ambulance radios are?
Well, I don't know what that, but, but I know the airports look like they're getting a hundred and fifty thousand a year.
But that don't, I mean, this, this all comes right down to that new ambulance, this is that new ambulance they got?
Well, there's the elevator.
But it's only a three thousand one, so, but I'm, this stuff, I'm not, this here's what I'm talking about, is that?
I don't, I don't. These are cap, these are, if you added up all the capital projects out of all the budgets. Okay, so if you just put that line on, and say, there's a capital project, okay, and add them all, that's what that shapes. Right, that's a, there's five thousand at least.
But it showed, yeah, sixty-three, see, I don't, I don't know how.
Well, that's what we put, let's check into that, see. T B district.
Well, we've already talked, I didn't know, see, I don't know why she breaking these down, they're invisible.
She's pulled them out of the different, uh, budgets.
I mean, they're good. And she had, oh, cause Steve Alchon, that's, he's.
And this was. E. Oh, they have a memorial fund, people give them money, all the evidence, they give, that's, those are important.
So, that's first, that's, yeah, we have to fill that. Weed grants, and that's each one, and then we went to.
It's a lot of weed.
Yeah, so we know exactly what it's going where.
Okay, that's pretty much it. Probably a lot of questions to ask, but it's good to correct these people, you know, I mean, care for them all, and.
See, and this is what we gone through that funeral, this is all, it's just page to page, it's, we have exactly, we can tell what Sarah here needs, and someone from March to replace that head. So, Vicki is estimated, you know, will have to hire somebody, or move somebody up, and Jeanette's retired in March, so she's already figured that in.
And they'll pay her off, right?
Yeah, Jeanette's payout, we can't really talk about the person. These here, a lot of these are probably, probably the people that, like the elevator, talk about throwing that in. These are the ones we did the other day. So, these are all pretty good, but we, once Sarah gets here, we'll.
We gotta go back through them, yeah, agree, answer all our questions. Okay.
They, uh, she was, they took in, uh, Saturday, they opened that one lane, drove it down there. But it's not clear the drive through yet, put that aside, but if you get one, they, so the buses, for everybody, but, nobody, Paul and I, I talked to Paul about it, and I said, well, they, that's not us, tell the buses, kind of. The, the transportation, they got put up some barriers, and some others, so, I guess I'd like to know, cause there's a bunch of people coming in, had the meeting, the eleventh, down the Chilay, bitching about their cars falling apart on the other county road, and I said, that's, they not. Well, they, they wanted, the county was gonna pay for the car, you know? So, gotta be ready for that, there, I just thought they were letting them, I went, but, they rolled out, but it's, they ain't nothing to do, cause they had thirty-some rigs of the regular people, they're doing the lane and ties, and the big trucks, it just.
Just piles of garbage, yeah. Well, it, it really isn't, to them, they won't desert it, I think, cause.
You know, he said if they had to, this came right from, not this guy, cause he never called me back, it was the other guy. It was the other guy, uh. Nothing was there. Anyway, he said that if it comes down to it, that they will, they're gonna try to actually help us with some gravel and dust abatement. They had to shut it down. This comes from the other guy. I said, well, can we get that right? He said, yeah. So, but he's gonna be gone for two weeks alone. I got there Friday.
Where's he at?
He's over, he's over this other guy. Because this guy is the one who did the cost pass. I just had him. Because if he hit a call or not, I wouldn't tell people that he drives in the woods. If he had a call, I'd like to be part of the transportation.
Or do I do?
I did.
Good thinking. You're gonna leave now?
Hmm?
You're gonna leave?
You're gonna stay for the ask question? I'll stick around just to witness.
Oh, that's my witness.
I'll still stick around.
Don't say nothing, though.
I gotta move my.
Oh, well, we can go stand in the hall. I'm gonna go somewhere.
Where would you bring it?
The van. Trust that the car is still, that's turning up. They'll have it, we can leave it over the quarters. Like we did last night. Or if you want to come home. Nah, I don't wanna care. Just do it again.
Hey, man.
Yeah. What do you do? Go away.
You know Sarah's not here. There it is. I didn't know what to say. Better do that, so here. That's okay, they can see him when I put it up on YouTube.
Yeah. Take the van over.
I know, so. When did I say Dan, hello, Dan? Train?
I didn't see what.
She's hot over. Been here before, that's what she think. Well, you know, too, uh. Dusty, it may matter.
Oh.
Get some exciting stuff on there, did you?
Oh, I certainly do. The press just walked in. You ready for public comment and questions?
Sure.
Good.
Can I have your recorder?
No.
Well, I had to go back in and do the session. Good to see you.
You too.
Yep, take care.
Huh?
Oh, private conversation, eh? Ooh, that'd be good on this. I'm sorry, I don't talk too loud. I don't talk too loud. So how you been?
Busy.
Busy. That way nothing's in the newspaper. Is anybody gonna be at the joint meeting Wednesday? Wednesday night? What joint meeting? I don't know.
Um, I won't. I'm gonna be elsewhere.
Yeah.
I have a previous commitment.
The last time, what's her name, was there, Jackie?
Yeah.
And she didn't put nothing in the paper.
What's up with that?
You tell me.
I'm gonna chat with her.
Good.
This is about fish kill, what the fish kill, remember what I said?
Oh, yeah.
Do you have a copy of the preliminary budget?
No.
That, that's the thing, I think that.
I guess nobody does. It's supposed to be available.
I just, I checked this morning. There wasn't much yet.
Yeah. Supposed to be according to the newspaper.
That's nice to hear. Okay, this is kind of set for public comment on budget work session or other matters that are within our jurisdiction. Is there any public comment? Elena?
Yep. Elena Gagliano for the record, but I noticed nobody's here taking the record. Mike Hayhoe isn't here today?
No.
Okay. So is anybody covering for him? No. So if I have a question regarding job descriptions or something, it's just gonna have to wait, right?
Or you could, you're ready tomorrow, we can make a note of it.
Yeah, so it's not available today.
What do you, what do you have a question?
I'm sorry?
We already said that, right?
I wasn't here because, you know, I waited for public comment. Public comment? That's this period, public comment? Um, where is the preliminary budget available for the public to view? Where is it?
It will be, it will be available on the 13th.
On the 13th? How come the newspaper says it's available now to see? According to the newspaper, that's what it says.
Always the newspaper isn't always right, I guess. But that's what we, that's what we've said all along is we'll try to make it available the 13th.
I didn't notice that. Newspaper's here now, did you know that?
I wasn't aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see. I don't know, and it's not even online. It's not online.
Because it doesn't exist yet.
No, not the notice, the public notice is not online either.
Public notice for?
The meeting, the public meeting for the discussion of the preliminary budget for tomorrow as well as next week?
It ain't on the agenda, you're saying?
No, I don't see it on the website. It's a notice, it's a public notice, it appeared in the newspaper. Usually it's put up on the county's website.
I think what we're telling you is the newspaper isn't accurate.
Okay, I had another question about the reclassification. I understand it was sent out by the Department of Revenue on the 22nd. Thank you for turning that off.
I didn't mean to have it on.
Excuse me, there's a thing, turn off cell phones up there.
I said I didn't.
Okay, okay, move ahead.
Thank you. Again, the Montana Department of Revenue said that a notice was sent out on August 22nd for reclassification. Is that why this budget is being kind of delayed? And you're still having work sessions?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah, because they changed the classification.
Of what?
Of the mill. And which affects the mill, the values which affects the mill.
Right, specifically what?
One later and said, the first one was incorrect, use this one, so moving back.
Okay. Do you know what that has to do with vigilante electric?
No, you mean as far as why there was a classification?
Reclassification.
Department of Revenue, uh, sorry, I don't know why they did.
Okay.
Explain it to us.
Okay, so it impacted the mills so much that the budget had to be redone, so to speak?
Sure. The first thing she has to do is calculate what the mill is gonna be, how much a mill represents. And then we have to go back through that, all the voted levies and the general levies and attach a mill to them. She has to do that, the clerk of court has to do that. But until we have those figures, we can't. There's no use working on the budget. We don't have the values of the mill source.
Because that would also affect the town of Phillipsburg, but they've already approved it. They've already proved their preliminary budget. I believe it was last week, it's a done deal because they had the option. Well, I guess Phillipsburg Town is wrong. I wonder if Drummond Town is wrong.
I'm just saying, I don't know why, but.
Okay, see, yeah. See, that's the whole point, excuse me, that's the whole point, kind of what work sessions are for. So that all this can be brought out and the people, the departments and everybody, the questions. I noticed you had a lot of questions amongst yourselves and nobody's here to answer them.
Well, we've been communicating with the department heads, yeah. And we have notes here.
I noticed that.
On the worksheets from the department heads. And, and so, yeah, that's what we're using.
So in essence, the preliminary budget is not completed and it's supposed to be completed September 13th, you said, or September?
Well, that's, that's the date we're shooting for to get it out to the public, the 13th.
13th of September?
Yes.
So then that notice was wrong, that was in the Phillipsburg mail?
Yes.
Okay. And I noticed, this is a comment. For the record, my record. It seemed like you were discussing the Pilt funds and that you were a little concerned about the money that you gave to Phillipsburg and Drummond or loaned to Phillipsburg and Drummond, that you weren't up to date on how it was being spent. I think that's what you said?
On Drummond only, because we haven't heard anything from him.
Okay.
We have from Phillipsburg, Mayor Redditch comes in regularly, talks about his progress.
What they're spending the money on.
We're supposed to have comments on that 11th.
Well, it's kind of interesting comment for the record, that there's no follow-up on the $25,000 contribution that you gave to Broadwater County. And I think the public would be like interested to know on how that money is being spent. And I think the public would be like, interested to know on how that money is being spent, especially since Broadwater County is being investigated... By the Attorney General's office. Oh, excuse me, what did you say, Commissioner Adler?
I thought we were talking about the money going to Drummond, and you changed the subject right away, so I wasn't finished telling you about what comments that were gonna come in, so...
No, I'm, I think we all may, I think my, my question was answered. Okay, so, um, this is a public comment, and, uh, one of the other counties, um, did ask for an invoice regarding that twenty-five thousand dollars, 'cause they did wanna know where the money was being spent. And, uh, I think my comment is done.
We have an invoice, remember?
Pardon?
We've received an invoice, they said they received the money for the prosecution of, uh...
That's not, that's just affirmation that they received it.
It's called an invoice, we got it.
Okay, that's what you're saying.
They got the money and they're...
You see, 'cause, uh, Bute, Silverball, they basically said, uh, that before they sent the twenty-five thousand, they wanted an itemization of exactly what the money was gonna be spent on. And we, I don't believe we did, but anyway, I'm still waiting for the information regarding the December twenty-sixth, twenty-eighteen letter. Hopefully, I'll get that.
We did under the recommendation of Blaine Bradshaw, county attorney, on how it worked.
I'm sorry? What did you say?
We did under the recommendation of Blaine Bradshaw, county attorney, on how it worked, same as we told you before.
You didn't tell me anything. It's funny? I don't think it's funny. I didn't get a letter that you, uh, did whatever you did under his advisement. What letter?
We didn't, we're not sending you a letter, it was, we've talked about this four times in the public, it's been on the agenda, we, uh, did a resolution, we sent the money to them for the purposes of prosecution, we got, what more do we need to say?
Well, that was...
We didn't get a letter.
Okay.
So, have it on our day, you know, if you think we misspent the money, then, you know, go to the Attorney General, do whatever you gotta do. But the money clearly went to aid the prosecution, which allowed us not to have another trial in this county, which would cost several hundred thousand dollars. And it was good public policy to do what we did, and like Commissioner Adler said, it was all advice of the attorney, and he's paid to advise us.
Then you shouldn't have any problem...
We don't have any problem.
Excuse me. You shouldn't have any problem providing the minutes, the date on the agenda, that the, uh, there was a discussion regarding the December twenty-sixth, twenty-eighteen, letter from the Broadwater County Attorney. You shouldn't have any problem providing that information, that's what I want. I already have the information about the letter in twenty-seventeen, I have that. I want the one for twenty-eighteen. And what came about it, the actions, the discussion, and everything. That's the one I want, Bill. And you say you have it, and you've provided it to me, I haven't gotten it, and I'd like a copy of that information that you say is available.
You got a copy of the letter, 'cause I saw the email that...
I got a copy of the letter.
Yeah.
So what? You got a copy of mine, what have you done with it? I don't see it being discussed on the agenda or anything.
I don't get it discussed, we're not gonna waste any more time on it. It was a legal...
For the record, we are not gonna waste more time on a twenty-five thousand dollar contribution from Pilt funds.
We, we, so, go ahead with your comment. We clearly are feeling justified about what we did, and, uh, we're happy to, you know, anybody from the...
Okay. For clarif, for clarification, I would like a copy of the minutes and the agenda item in twenty-nineteen, when this was all decided on. Now, if it exists, there shouldn't be any problem, because that is public information.
The only, the only discussion, this discussion only started after we received the letter from the Broadwater County Attorney requesting this way of handling it. Now, I'm sure there were some conversations, either telephonic or otherwise, between the county attorneys, okay? But the only letter that came to this commission was from the Broadwater County Attorney saying, this is the way you're gonna, we're gonna prosecute this case, we're gonna need a contribution to do it, because we're gonna combine charges that occurred in Granite County and other counties.
I know all that, Bill, I know, I do. Because there's two letters. There's two letters, one in, in twenty-seventeen, when it happened, and one in twenty-eighteen, December, saying, yes, we need the money. Okay? And I didn't find out anything about that letter until a friend of mine who lives in Broadwater County contacted me the end of January, beginning of February, saying, your county must be rich to send a twenty-five thousand dollar donation to Broadwater County. And I said to him, what? Because I had no idea.
And you misrepresented it in the paper, saying it was going to the family or the officer.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't. I'm glad you're laughing, I just, I'm glad you're laughing.
You weren't here when this action was done, in a public meeting, that's fine.
What action?
You certainly could've come in and said, gee, I wasn't here.
Oh, really?
Would you use the money? Or, you know, we could've said, here's the minutes.
Well, I checked, I checked in January, when he told me that, I looked at the agenda and the minutes and everything for January, I never saw any such thing like that.
You go look again. Anyway, so, go ahead with your...
Commissioner Hinkle, you're a new commissioner, you weren't, uh, you were just seated in twenty-nineteen.
Speaking to Mike? No, I can't.
Hold this for me for a second, please, hold this for a second. You wanna hold that, just hold it like that. You wanna talk? Wow, it's on, is that amazing?
It's been on.
Okay. Commissioner Hinkle, can you hear me now? Thank you. You were newly seated in twenty-nineteen. Were you familiar with the background of this contribution?
Not really, but once they explained it to me...
When was that explained to you?
I'm glad I voted for it.
When was it explained to you?
In a public meeting.
In a public, I was coming to, Commissioner...
In a pub, what was the date of that public meeting?
In December, on my own, before I was...
That's not a public meeting.
What?
That was in a pub, you see, the letter came in, was dated December twenty-sixth.
That's fine.
So, when was there a public meeting after December twenty-sixth?
I don't know, it came up for a vote when I voted on it, I was brand new here, okay? I voted for it, I'm glad I voted for it.
Then it should be on, then it should be in the minutes, when you took office, which would've been sometime in January of twenty-nineteen. My point, sir, is that this is part of the Montana Constitution, open meeting and public on... See, this is funny.
I'm glad you can quote that every time to us, thank you.
Does it mean anything to you?
Yeah.
The Montana Constitution, what part? What part of the Constitution is in there?
Okay, 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 okay.
Don't yell at me, you gonna get up and attack me like you did Dick once? I'm done, end of conversation. Let's see, I believe... And you're still on probation, aren't you? You're at, on probation, thank you very much. Thank you.
Excuse me, lady.
I'm not a lady to you.
You don't have a clue what's going on, so before you threaten me with probation, uh, find out for sure, okay? Thank you very much.
Oh, I have a copy of the, uh, decision. You ended the meeting, I believe, so I'm still talking, 'cause he is. He's addressing the lady here. Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Goodbye.
Hopefully, good riddance.
What?
Where was your appropriation?
The letter.
The letter has nothing to do with the budget appropriation.
For the record, I have never said it wasn't the right thing to do. It was the right thing to do, but it was the wrong process that was followed. And there's laws that our elected officials are supposed to follow. Apparently, in this county, they don't. Thank you.
If you ask any questions or disrupt, uh, he called it a disruption, he said, I've already spoke with the sheriff on that, and I will call, and I, I will call him and have him over here and have him removed from the, so, I was threatened, right?
So, I guess you didn't unrepeat, 'cause they, I didn't see the sheriff there.
So, excuse me. Dick Motta, you were here since what time?
Eight-thirty.
Since eight-thirty this morning, that's what time the so-called, uh, work session began?
Yeah.
And what happened when you first came in?
I was threatened by Commissioner Slaughter, that if I had any comments, they should be postponed until the eleven forty-five, uh, time, that are, if I had any comments, if I made any questions, during that period of time, he would, he had already discussed it with the sheriff, and the sheriff was gonna come over and have me removed from the office.
I noticed that you were very good, and you didn't say anything.
I didn't say anything, I didn't...
Okay.
Must've been a very good boy, 'cause I didn't see the sheriff there, so...
You noticed that? Oh, and, oh, one other thing that happened, um, Tim Allen came in, and he wanted to put his recorder, or his cell, his iPhone, on the desk or something?
No, that was... That was me.
Oh, that was you, and what happened?
They said that they were in a budget session, that times for public comment would be at eleven forty-five.
Okay, so they basically told you. Bye. Okay, so, continue, it is now about ten after twelve. The session for today, Monday, the ninth, was ended at twelve. They're not gonna be back today. You'll notice that the courthouse is closed, in essence, the offices, because it is lunch hour. However, these commissioners that we entrust with our tax dollars walked out, leaving their office open, with the budget sitting right on their desk. Not in the clerk and recorder's office, in their desk, on their desk. By the way, the clerk and recorder, Sarah, is not in today, nor is...
The budget.
The administrator, Mike Cahill, so if you need information, that's your tough luck. Have a good day, folks, tomorrow, there's a continuation. Take care. Oh, well, Commissioner just left. Must've riled them up real bad, they left. They left the door open. There is the budget, with all the notes, right there. That's the budget. That was earlier, a person was sold, there it is, go and look at it. Okay? Still in the notes. Again, the door is left open. Here's the clerk and recorders. You'll notice, there is nothing here regarding a public, the preliminary budget. Notice that? Again, the door is left open, and the lights are left open. It's twelve oh five.